Good evening. I'd like to call the Howell Township Planning Board Thursday, October 3rd, 2019, regular meeting to order. Eileen, please read the opening statement.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 4th, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Trittown News. Second, on January 4th, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 4th, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning -- planning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on the -- on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you. Pull the room, please.
Mr. Boyle has been excused. Mr. Dorado?
Here.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Chief Kudrick?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro has been excused. Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Everett has been excused. I have not heard from Deputy Mayor O'Donnell and Chairman Nash.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Okay. I'd like to ask everyone at this time to please rise for the pledge to the flag and followed by a moment of silence for our first responders and troops both here and abroad. Chief.
What relates to the flag of the United States of America? Which is the evidence? What is an individual that literally needs justice for?
I have no correspondence.
All right, let's move right down to the resolutions. First one is case number SD 2909F. It's Matt Gotti of Shepherd Estates. It's a resolution granting two one-year extensions of time on final subdivision approval. Eligible voters are Mr. Dorado, Mr. Hooser, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Tannenhouse, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Memorialize the resolution.
Sorry, memorialize.
I'll second.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution's memorialized.
Thank you. Second one is case number SD 2987, DNR Management LLC. It's a resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters, Mr. Dorado, Mr. Hooser, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Tannenhouse, and myself. Gentlemen, do I have a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve the resolution. Please underestimize.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution's memorialized.
Thank you. Third one is case number SP 1060, MCK Enterprises. It's a resolution granting minor site plan approval. Eligible voters, Mr. Dorado, Mr. Hooser, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Tannenhouse, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to memorialize case number SP-1060. Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
That was Nick, right?
Yep.
Thank you.
Brian on the motion, Nick on the second.
Thank you. Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution's memorialized.
All right, the last one is case number SD 2981F, Arnold Boulevard LLC and TEK Warehouse LLC. It's a resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters, Mr. Schneider and myself.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to memorialize case number SD 281F.
Thank you, and I'll make the second.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution's memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are now going to move on to our cases. First application is going to be case number SD 2986, K Havaneian Four Seasons at Colts Farm LLC. The application is for preliminary and final major subdivision, preliminary and final major site plan, and Woodlands Management. It's application of K Havaneian Four Seasons at Colts Farm LLC as applicant and Mickelwee Family Partnership LP as owners seeking preliminary and final major subdivision. Preliminary and final major site plan and Woodlands Management Plan, approval to remove all existing site improvements and subdivide to track into 111 lots for age-restricted, single-family dwellings, a clubhouse/recreation lot including a stormwater management -- a stormwater basin, and a sanitary pump station facility, and open space lot also including a stormwater basin and an additional open space lot, a gatehouse entry walls including site signage, and a fountain feature on premises known as Block 183, Block 97.
9801 it should be.
9801 and 9803, 1191 New Jersey State Route 33, and I guess that's 481 is the address? 481 Colts Neck Road. This application was partially heard on June 30th, 2019, when it was carried to August 15th, 2019 with no further notice. After some additional testimony on August 15th, 2019, this application was carried to October 3rd, 2019 with no further notice.
Mr. Chairman, I will be excusing myself.
Okay. Let the record please reflect that Mr. Tannenhouse has reclusive himself from this application.
Oh, noted.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Before we start, I just want to let everybody know that Mr. Dorado, Mr. Husser, Chief Kudrick, and Mr. Seaman all certified to vote on this application. They all watched the videos.
So everyone up on the dais is eligible to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary Giacobi, Alfieri Jacobs, on behalf of the applicant. As the chairman indicated in his summary, we were here on August 15th. At that meeting, we presented testimony, and that was the second public hearing. At that meeting, we presented testimony from Mr. Fisher from K-HOP, from Tim Lurie, our engineer, traffic expert John Ray, and Allison Coffin, our planner. The only issue that was really open as of that evening was a drainage concern that was expressed by Mr. Herman. We had agreed to meet with Mr. Herman and with Laura Newman and address that concern. We're here tonight to give the board an explanation of what we've done since the last meeting, what the solution is, and we acknowledge that tonight, because we haven't submitted a fully-designed plan for this board to review, we're only going to be asking for preliminary approval, and then we would come back for final once the engineering plans are approved by Mr. Herman and Laura Newman.
Has our engineer seen the revisions for the drainage?
Yes, yes, and we'll get it, we'll discuss that briefly, and then Laura can respond.
Okay, fine.
And we're going to start with Mr. Lurie. Again, he was sworn in and qualified at the last hearing. Tim?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Sure. Tim Lurie.
He's going to start with. On the screen is a plan that we're going to -- that Dave Fisher's now giving to the board, and as reduced versions as well in the board's special.
Is this something?
And Tim, can you?
Okay, just before -- let's mark this in first.
Right, can you identify what that document is, Tim?
Sure. This, this plan is a, is a sub-sheet of the set of plans as previously submitted, which, based on our meetings with the township engineer and the board engineer, to handle the off-site drainage.
So let's, before we, that's a lot of detail, so let's just mark this as A17, and this will be a revised drainage plan dated what?
Got, um...
10-2?
Yes.
Okay, all right, continue.
Yeah, Mr. Alfieri, we're having problems hearing him.
You want to stand there, or are you?
I'll stand up.
Thank you.
What do we mark?
A17.
A17.
Can you hear me?
You have to hold it right up to your mouth.
Can you hear me?
Yep, thank you.
So, Tim, would you describe to the board what engineering activity occurred since the last hearing as it relates to this exhibit, and then explain to the board what this exhibit represents?
Sure. This exhibit is a copy of Sheet 521 of the set of plans that was submitted. As a result from the last meeting, we met with the township engineer's office numerous times. We also met with the board engineer to review the -- their concern has always been the off-site drainage that comes from the farmer's property on this site located to, located to the west. So, previously on the set of plans, we had a smaller infiltration basin which captured the drainage from Colts Farm Road, and also the off-site drainage from the farmer's property, and then we had it tying into the existing pipes along, underneath Route 33, just a little west of Quick Check. And doing our iterations for the township engineer, we came up with a solution where we're going to route, we're no longer going to tie into the Quick Check system, we're going to tie our own 24-inch pipe and run along the rear of our proposed lot, and then tie into our existing outfall with a dual head, with a head wall with dual pipes at our current, at our previous scour hole that we had for the infiltration basin on the site. As a result of this, this will allow the water that comes, approximately 48 acres of off-site drainage, will allow the water to flow through the pipe system. We have an outlet control structure to reduce the flows to match the existing conditions that are located out here, and it's going to allow the drainage to outlet this infiltration basin, and then run to our proposed scour hole that we have in the, at the wetlands boundary, and allow the water to dissipate out at the wetlands versus coming through and tying into the drainage system that's over at Quick Check, and then work its way along the back of the farm fields. So this will provide a more direct route right to the wetlands and the water, and help to solve the issue of the drainage issue of the off-site drainage.
And that plan has verbally been approved by Mr. Herman's office, is that correct?
That is correct.
And Laura can comment when we get to that, when she's ready. Now, is there a, is there a revised landscape plan to show the board how that area will now be buffered and how it will appear to the public?
Yes, sir.
All right, and this plan is going to be marked. Dave's handling it, handing it out, but while he's handing it out, what are we going to call this A18 exhibit, Tim?
This, this exhibit's entitled, it's a landscape sketch of the infiltration area and rear lots along Colts Farm Road.
How about revised landscape plan?
Revised landscape plan.
And what's the date?
The date on that? 9:30, 2019.
Okay. Okay, okay, go ahead.
And, and the board can see it, but, and obviously Sherry will have to comment on it when it's formally submitted, and that's why, Mr. Chair, we're only seeking preliminary approval tonight so that the board professionals and Mr. Herman have a chance to see the fully-designed plan.
Understood.
Tim, just generally describe again what's proposed.
We, as a result of the, of our drainage configuration, the infiltration basin extends longer along Colts Farm Road, so as a result of that, the landscaping got revised to be around the edge of the infiltration basin, and we're still providing street trees along Colts Farm Road.
Now, the revised plan, that does not result in the need for any additional relief that has already been applied for, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, during your phasing plan, you had a temporary access out onto Colts Neck Road. Is it, I apologize, is that still in effect?
Yes.
And does this plan have any issues with that?
Yeah. The temporary, the temporary construction road will still come through, come through Section 1 of the plan, and it'll cross, right, connect into, will still connect straight through to Colts Farm Road. As a result of that, with the basin area, we might have to do a temporary pipe underneath the roadway just to allow the water to, to spread into the whole entire infiltration area. But we're still, we're, by Lot 48.
And, and as part of the resubmission to the board, we'll have a phasing plan that shows how that will operate.
That wasn't considered, like, drainage?
Oh, right. Right, you, we did present the road there as the chairman recommended, recollects, but we're going to now show how the drainage will impact that and be temporarily treated while we're building the other phases. There was one other question, Tim, that was raised by the chairman at the last meeting. There's another variance that's required near Route 33 for the parking that's within the 100-foot buffer on Route 33, and we have, that's a, another exhibit? This is?
This is just a blow-up exhibit of the rec area which shows the 100-foot buffer line, and in yellow is the area of the parking lot and dumpster that, that is located within that 100-foot buffer, and that has approximately 41, 41 feet into the buffer for a distance of 130 feet.
So it's about 5,000 square feet?
That is correct.
Now, I remember, if I recall correctly, I should say, that you were, based upon your design, over-parked for the requirements of the clubhouse. Is that correct?
That is correct.
For the ordinance?
For the ordinance, yes.
Is there, so, am I looking at now that you're representing, that you're redesigning that area to eliminate?
We, we're not proposing to, we're just, if the board was interested in seeing it, we could design it, we would lose about three or four spaces. We would prefer operationally to keep it as proposed with those spaces. It doesn't encroach within, it's more than 50 feet away from the road, we have adequate landscaping to buffer it, and that's why we want to try and keep it the way we proposed, and, and ask for the variance, about 5,000 square feet of area.
So, again, Mr. Alfieri?
Yes.
Could we put some testimony on record supporting why you should be granted that variance?
Yes, and Allison did that at the last meeting, but we can do that again, she's here.
Yeah, if you could, I simply don't recall it.
Okay.
I apologize.
All right, once we finish with Tim, then, then we can do that. And that's, that's all we have, Mr. Chair, because all the other engineering issues we agreed to address at the last hearing.
I'll just ask, Ms. Newman? Are you satisfied with the proposed revisions?
Yes, we've had the opportunity to review the revisions and just subject to getting a full, full set which shows those improvements in the routings, but we take no exception to the information as shown and believe it to be compliant.
Okay, thank you.
I think, Mr. Chairman, it's also important to place on the record, beyond being compliant, and, Mr. Laura, you can either confirm or correct me, with regard to onsite drainage, you are completely compliant with all RSIS and local requirements.
That is correct.
With, with regard to the off-site, you, you didn't have actually a requirement, and you've exceeded what your responsibilities are in this application.
That is correct.
And Laura, just for the record, Mr. Herman's office also confirmed with you that they were okay with the design?
That is correct. I spoke with Justin Yost yesterday.
All right, thank you. Would have any questions to this witness? Public like to ask any questions of this witness? If so, please step forward. Seeing none, close the public portion.
Thank you. Allison? And we're going to leave that up because we'll just put the testimony up for that. Allison, you were sworn in and qualified at the last meeting?
Yes.
And you remain under oath, is that okay, Ma'am?
Yes.
So you heard the chairman's question about the, that encroachment that we refer to by the clubhouse?
Yes. I think that variance can be granted under the C2 standard. It advances some of the purposes of the municipal land use law with regard to purpose C, which is to provide light, adequate light air and open space. The applicant did attempt to redesign this area to push the parking out of that 100-foot setback. They were not able to achieve that without losing parking spaces, but it also created a much more tighter layout which had a negative impact to light air and open space for that area, and they felt that having the parking extend a little bit into the front yard setback as required does provide a better design in terms of the impact on light air and open space. It also advances a purpose G, which is to provide sufficient space in an appropriate location for a variety of uses, including residential and recreational uses. Now, while the applicant is proposing a parking that does exceed the ordinance minimum, given the, the way this facility is going to function, and it has outdoor recreation as well as indoor recreation, the additional parking that the applicant is proposing, they feel they absolutely need to support this clubhouse. So, again, without the extension into the 100-foot setback, we would not be able to provide the level of parking that the applicant thinks this facility needs. Then purpose I, promote a desirable visual environment, promotes a more desirable visual environment to have the more spread-out parking as is proposed. You did ask last time about the extent to which this parking goes into the 100-foot setback, and we took a look at that. Looking at the entirety of the site frontage with the entire 100-foot setback that's required, that parking that we have highlighted on the exhibit that's currently displayed is only 4.2% of that entire 100-foot setback area. So it's my opinion that the intrusion in this case is not significant. The benefits of this variance include providing adequate parking to support the clubhouse use, providing it in a way that provides a more desirable visual environment for the parking facility, and as there's no detriment, in my opinion, that would be associated with this variance, as the parking can be fully screened with landscaping, it's my opinion that the benefits of this variance outweigh the detriments.
That's all we have, Mr. Chair.
So, I'm just going to ask to pull the board. Nick, what do you think?
Absolutely fine with it.
You're, you're fine with the incursion?
Yes.
Paul?
I'm fine with the incursion.
Chief?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
That concludes our, you want to open it to the public?
Yes. Is there anyone, I'm sorry, Sherry?
I just wanted to confirm, will there be additional landscaping than what was on the, the last set of plans from May? I, I don't think the parking's in that section buffered. I think the landscaping starts before, or after it.
I don't know, Tim, do you know the answer? Let us check the plan. I don't, I don't recall if you had a comment and you reported about that, if you did, we said we agreed to address it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it, it looks like you might have to just add a few trees or shift the landscaping a little over to cover the frontage of those stalls.
Yeah, we'll have to show something about this.
Right, this area that we're talking about, right in, in yellow.
That's fine. So, so if the board were to grant preliminary approval, we will agree to submit a revised landscape plan to the satisfaction of your landscape architect in that area.
Okay, that, that would be a condition of the, of the approval if so, if the board so moved. All right, is there anyone in the public who would like to come up and ask questions of this witness? If so, please step forward. Seeing none, I will close this portion of the public, here, this portion of the public hearing.
That concludes our presentation. We'd request that the board act favorably on the preliminary approval only.
Thank you.
Okay. Does the board have any comments or anything, or if not, can I have a motion, please?
Well, Mr. Chair, we need to open it up to the public.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's been a long day. You're going to have to prod me a lot tonight. Is there anyone in the public who would like to step forward and testify or make any comments on this application? If so, please step up to the podium. Seeing none, I will close the public portion of this application. All right, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve preliminary on case number SD 2986.
And that would be with ancillary variance and design waiver relief, subject to all the conditions that were placed on the record.
And, and that's subdivision and site plan?
Right, yeah.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
It's a very nice application.
Thank you.
My compliments. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, excuse me, case, oh, good, case number SP 1006, Gil Petroleum, Inc. It's an application for conditional use slash preliminary and final major site plan. It's the application of Gil Petroleum, Inc., as applicant and owner, seeking conditional use and preliminary and final major site plan approval to remove all existing site improvements, including the existing site excess drives, and construct a 3,000-square-foot convenience store with gasoline, fuel dispensing service, consisting of six pump oilings and an intended kiosk beneath a 62-foot by 62-foot canopy. Mr. Alfieri?
Good evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Salvatore Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant. Last meeting we were here, we got through some of the testimony. One of the, one of the witnesses that the board needs to hear from again, and Ms. Dixell particularly needs to hear from again, is the LSRP, who could not be here tonight. So, we're, but we, we never got traffic testimony in, so we want to at least do that tonight, and then, the problem is coordinating with an out-of-state LSRP who's employed by the fuel company is difficult to coordinate. So we do have John Ray, who's going to present traffic testimony, and that would at least address every other witness other than the LSRP.
All right, that's, that's fine, Mr. Alfieri. I just wanted to, I, I believe I represented to you at the last time, at the last meeting, that the board is interested in, when that LSRP returns, that he has updated information, and that we're not simply just testifying on what's been on record already.
Yes, and, and we will, before the LSRP testifies, we will submit anything that's recent from the last submission to the present, we will submit in advance to the board.
Hey, Mr. Ray, you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
John Ray, R-E-A.
Mr. Ray has testified in front of this board numerous times. I see him probably more than my wife now.
Okay.
It's a good thing. Again... Again, my two standard questions. Your license is current with the professional board?
It is.
And you have no, you have no?
Actions?
Actions, thank you. It's been a long day.
You have no actions pending against you?
I do not.
All right, we'll accept Mr. Ray as an expert traffic engineer.
And, Mr. Chair, I misspoke earlier. The other witness we haven't presented is the planner, but we can't bring her on until all the other testimonies on the record, because she needs that to support her opinion. So, anyway, Mr. Ray, you actually prepared a report and you studied the traffic aspects of this application, is that correct?
I did.
And would you identify for the board or explain to the board what you did to conduct that study and what the results were?
I'm going to try to maneuver myself into a position where I don't hit somebody with the lasers. I'm sorry. Yes, we did do a full traffic impact analysis, which is dated March 7, 2019. We conducted AM and PM peak street hour traffic counts across the Route 9 frontage of the property and the Wyckoff Road frontage of the property. We conducted a trip generation analysis for the convenience store with gas pumps based on the latest edition of the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. And I would just point out, I think that when Mr. Nash started to talk about the application, the size of the store is now down to 2,700 square feet. It was, at one point in time, 3,000 square feet. It's been decreased in size to 2,700 square feet. We conducted level of service capacity analyses at the exit driveways to Route 9, which is a right-turn exit only, and to Wyckoff Road, which will be a left-turn exit only. We reviewed the site plan with respect to the availability and the accessibility of the parking supply, the general site circulation, the circulation for delivery trucks, refuse removal trucks, and things of that nature.
And, Mr. Ray, at the last meeting, we also stipulated, after a discussion with Mr. Herman, that we would agree to install a sidewalk along Wyckoff Mills Road. How do you explain to the board where and how that would work?
Well, that's my understanding, and I assume it would be along our property frontage. I'm not certain, I wasn't in on that conversation, but I know Mr. Herman is satisfied that we can install a sidewalk that he wants.
We agreed that we would install it to the corner, wherever the intersection is.
Up to the corner of Strickland Road? Okay.
Wherever that's striped, wherever the crosswalk.
You're going to do it on the west side of Wyckoff Road from your entrance all the way up to the intersection.
That's correct.
Correct.
That's correct. All right, and as a result of your investigation report, did you come to a conclusion as to the access points, whether they operate safely and efficiently?
Yes. As the board members probably know, the site previously was used as a gas station. If I'm not mistaken, I might have been involved back in the mid-'80s when it was originally approved as a, I think initially it was an Amaco station, it's probably changed brands a couple of times. So the site has been previously used as a gas station. Our analysis of the site driveway shows that the right-turn exit onto Route 9 northbound will operate at level of service C during the AM and PM peak street hours. The left-turn movement out onto Wyckoff Road will operate at level of service B during the morning and afternoon peak hours. So both of the site driveways, the exiting movements, will operate well within what we consider to be acceptable traffic engineering parameters. The site distance at both access points is also good for viewing traffic that, you know, needs to be seen in order to safely exit the driveways. We are providing 18 parking spaces, which is in accordance with what the code requires. Some of the spaces are in an area to the south side of the gasoline pumps, and I'm going to talk about them in a minute. There are nine parking spaces in front of the convenience store, and the balance of the spaces are to the south of the gasoline pumps. It is, it's my opinion, based on some research counts we've done at other gasoline service stations that have convenience stores like this, that we will not need all of the parking spaces that are south of the canopy and the gasoline pumps. We can bank two or four of those parking spaces, however the board may want to handle that situation. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, although I'm not the site engineer, if we bank at least two of those parking spaces, I think we can get the lot coverage under what's required by the code. So that would be another positive.
Well, can we just talk about that for a moment?
Sure.
Because that's sort of always a vague concept, the banked parking spaces. You know, how and when, you know, would it be determined whether those spaces would ever be needed and to be developed?
I assume that would be something the township would have control over if they decided, based on an inspection, the police or zoning would make an inspection determine that we needed the parking spaces. I firmly do not think we need those parking spaces south of the canopy. I think we need one of the rows of parking spaces to put employees down there, but that's really all we need. I want to get into a little bit more testimony as to why I believe the nine parking spaces in front of the convenience store will be adequate. And I'm going to get into that right now, if it's okay. We've done some research counts at these facilities, again, and we've broken down the number of people that enter the facility that purchase gasoline only, percentage of people that make a gas purchase and a convenience store purchase, and the percentage of people that make a convenience store-only purchase. And the way it generally breaks down is 50% of the traffic entering the site, and these are approximate numbers, they're rounded off, about 50% of the traffic entering the site makes a gasoline purchase only. Another 25% of the site traffic makes a gas purchase and a convenience store purchase, and the remaining 25% will make a convenience store purchase only. We're projecting, based on the ITE Trip Generation Manual for the size of the convenience store, that we're going to generate during peak hours approximately 100 customers. I think that's probably a little bit on the high end. We've just done some research counts at a similar facility on Route 9 up in Old Bridge, where the Route 9 volumes are even a little bit higher, and we were a little bit below those numbers. But worst-case scenario, we're looking at probably 100 customers per hour. So that essentially means that 25% of those customers are going to probably proceed right to the front of the convenience store, use one of the parking spaces to get into the store and make their purchase and then exit the site. Another 25% of the customers are going to be at the gas pumps, and they'll make a decision based on how much time they think they need to spend in the convenience store, as to whether or not they want to stay at the gas pumps, run into the store, pick up what they need, and come back while the vehicle's being fueled, or just wait for the vehicle to be fueled, pull into one of the parking spaces, and then they have a little bit more time in the convenience store. The bottom line at the end of the day is, we're expecting about, when all of that is factored, we're expecting about 40 customers per hour during a peak hour to need one of the parking spaces to use the convenience store. Forty customers. We have nine parking spaces. Two of them are striped to be handicap spaces. I think we only need one. I don't know if there's been a discussion on that. I don't know.
Yes, there was a discussion on that.
We only need one.
Well, yes, and we asked for two.
Yes, for two.
Because of the proximity of the villages.
Okay, so I'm going to assume those two handicap spaces aren't being used by anybody, so we have seven left for the general customer population. The average person spends about two or three minutes in the store. So even going on the high end at three minutes that an average person is in the store, each one of those seven parking spaces can turn over 20 times during the peak hour to handle customers. And so if you do some simple math, seven parking spaces that can each turn over 20 times an hour, you have the capacity to handle 210 customers. We're expecting 40. So what this all means is that, in my opinion, there will never be an occasion when any of the customers going to the convenience store, whether they're coming just to the store or they're getting gas, and then after their gas purchase is done, they pull up to one of the parking spaces, they'll never need any of the parking spaces that are on the south side of the canopy. We are showing those parking spaces in order to show to the board how we can meet the parking requirement of 18 spaces. But as I've indicated, we're not going to need those spaces for customers at the south end of the canopy. We could put employees down there, but we can certainly bank one of the two rows of parking spaces that are down there.
Now, what type of permitting or approvals will be required from outside agencies as it relates to traffic?
We will need a permit from the New Jersey Department of Transportation. It will be a major permit without a planning review.
And Wyckoff is not a county road? Well, either way, it's a township road, right?
I thought Wyckoff was in the state jurisdiction.
Ms. Dixell? You know what? I think the portion of Wyckoff along our frontage is under state jurisdiction because it's part of the drug handle that serves Strickland Road. That's correct.
So that means the NJDOT will review both access points on both roads?
That's correct.
And that, obviously, if the board were to grant this approval, that would be a condition of approval?
Yes, it would.
There were some traffic comments in Ms. Newman's report.
Can I just ask, Mr. Ray? Your dwell time of three minutes, is that based upon the research that you did?
Yeah, we actually timed how long some of the people were in the, if you know, the Petro 19 store that's on the northbound side of Route 9 in Old Bridge, basically across from the Wawa, which is on the southbound side. That's where we did our latest research counts.
Okay. And that's, three minutes is field data?
Two to three minutes, but, you know, three minutes usually is an average. So that's basically what we timed.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's all.
With respect to Laura's report on page 7.
What's the date of that report?
April 5.
April 5. With respect to the traffic items, the narrative of the traffic impact analysis should include tables showing the no-bill and billed levels of service and delays. I don't think we can do a no-bill because there's nothing generating traffic there, Laura, so we can only do the billed, but we'll give you that. Right now, there is no no-bill condition because the site isn't generating any traffic. The next item deals with the site generation from this development project needs to be, oh, other projects that we considered in developing the design year 2020 traffic volumes. As the board is pretty well aware of, there was a shopping center that was approved several months ago on the northbound side of Route 9, just south of this project. We did the traffic study. We have the traffic numbers. We included that traffic in the projections of future traffic. I believe it was the Savo application, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep, yes.
And the last item indicates that there were different peak hours, and Laura is correct. There were different peak hours for Route 9 and for Wyckoff Road. Essentially, what we did was we took the higher of the two peak hours for each road, and that's what we considered in doing the analysis. If I'm not mistaken, the peak hours on Route 9 occurred between 8:00 and 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 and 6:00 p.m. in the afternoon. And on Wyckoff, it was 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning, so it was a little bit of a different peak hour. But we basically just used the higher of the two peak hours on each road in order to do our analysis. We still got good levels of service, so I'm confident the traffic can exit the site with reasonable delays during peak hours. I think that was the end of the traffic comments.
And that concludes the traffic testimony, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I also, I just want to place into perspective a little bit for the board, the legal, what we are able to evaluate under the municipal land use law. So this is a permitted use. It's a conditional use. They meet all the conditions here at the planning board. The municipal land use law and the way that that law has been interpreted by our courts does not allow the board to take into account that there is going to be an increased level of traffic. It's assumed that a governing body takes that into account when it makes a use permitted. The sole focus, or the major focus, is on whether ingress and egress is going to be safe, and even that is going to be handled largely by DOT, although we can certainly comment upon it. And then, obviously, you know, the adequacy of the parking and internal circulation.
And we're also able to comment on the onsite circulation?
Yeah.
Which is one I wanted to ask Mr. Ray about.
Sure.
There was some discussion, I believe, with your site engineer about how the site interacts when a truck is over by the three fueling spots. And I'd like you to please comment on that, given the location and proximity of those fueling pods to the entrance.
Okay. We anticipate the fuel delivery truck will enter from Route 9 and position itself over the fuel tanks, which are on the southern half of the property. The fuel trucks drop from the right-hand side of the truck, so the truck will basically be positioned about where I'm indicating here with the laser. And when that happens, traffic will still be able to enter from Route 9 and access the pumps on the west side of the property, and also the pumps that are on the west side of the, or easterly, I guess, set of pumps. I would describe it that way. They probably will not be able to get into the east side of the easterly pump configuration when the truck is sitting here. But that truck will be there for about 20 minutes to unload the fuel. Will probably need about three or four deliveries a week. It's not a situation that, it's going to happen three or four times a week for 20 minutes. And I would point out also that when the traffic enters from Route 9, if they want to just get to the front of the convenience store and use the parking spaces, the dimension between the gasoline pumps under the canopy, the distance is 34 feet. So that's plenty of room for cars to be staged on either side of the pump islands getting fuel. I assume those cars are going to take about eight feet, just like a parallel parking space. So you have 34 feet in there, 34 minus 16 would still leave 18 feet for a car, which is basically seven feet wide, to get through the pump islands and to the front of the convenience store. So I think that's how that would work.
And this is proposed for a 24-hour station, correct?
Correct.
And continuing on that, I do believe that the engineer presented a circulation, truck circulation?
Yes.
That showed that that vehicle would be exiting onto Wyckoff in order to, if it wanted to, travel to the south.
Yes, he's indicated the fuel delivery truck would exit to Wyckoff and then go up to Strickland Road, where it could go back to Route 9 and either go north or south.
Right. And there was, and this may be an unfair question, it may not be something that I can ask you about, but there was some comment from the public about the issue of that truck maneuvering at the intersection of Wyckoff and Strickland to execute that left turn to go back towards Route 9. I don't know if you've looked at that or if you're familiar with that. Could you offer a professional opinion about that?
I think there's adequate geometry at that intersection for the truck to make the left-hand turn, to get back to Route 9, to either get into the left lane, to turn left and go south, or go right. There's, I'm trying to remember whether the Wyckoff Road, the Strickland Road approach is a two- or a three-lane approach, but it's a multiple-lane approach to the signal at Route 9. There's definitely enough room for the truck to make that maneuver and get into the proper lane.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any questions, Mr. Ray?
They try. Whenever they need it, they do it.
Seeing none, I will open up the public portion. If anyone would like to come up and ask questions, the traffic-related questions of Mr. Ray?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ms. Dixell, if you could just place your, you don't need to be sworn in, it's just questions. So remember, just questions of Mr. Ray regarding traffic.
Okay.
So if you could just state your name and give us your address?
My name is Barbara.
Okay.
My name is Barbara Dixell, 62A Yatsa, Victoria, Freehold, New Jersey.
Okay.
Villages. Let me just do this. Okay.
You can sit down if you'd like.
Excuse me?
So you can sit down if you'd like. We'll pick you up.
No, I need to, I need to work. Okay, Mr. Ray, your traffic pattern, this is what the board should know, this is their traffic pattern. They're in on 9 North, they're out on Wyckoff Mills Road. As you know, they're.
Well, let's just, let's let him answer that question. Is that a correct statement, Mr. Ray?
Traffic can enter the property either from northbound Route 9 or from Wyckoff Road, and it can exit to either roadway.
Okay.
Okay, well, according to this site map.
Ms. Alfieri, let me just stop for a second. Is it my recollection that the applicant has agreed to post signs for no trucks so that the only larger wheel-based vehicles that are servicing this? that the only larger wheel-based vehicles that are servicing this facility are the delivery vehicles?
That's correct.
Right, so there will be no fueling of large wheel-based vehicles?
Right, and the diesel will only be for those smaller wheel-based vehicles.
Okay.
So the only large trucks would be the fueling trucks?
Delivery trucks.
Well, can I just ask one question on that? Suppose I'm neither carrying fuel for the site nor do I need fuel, I'm just hungry, and I'm driving a tractor-trailer up Route 9, can I pull in and go there?
Our signs are going to prohibit that activity.
Okay, all right.
May I proceed?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so, as you can see, members of the board, this is an undersized, non-conforming lot in every direction. With the new pumps and with the store, there's barely, as you can see, enough room for this truck to get on or off the property safely. It's just going to be a really close call--
You're offering testimony now. Please ask the questions.
Okay, do you realize that any gasoline truck is going to have a heck of a time getting off this property safely when your store and your pumps are so close together? Do you realize that?
No, I don't realize that. I think the turning radius plan shows that the truck can get on to, you know, off the site safely.
Okay, and you are aware of the fact that this entire property is an undersized, non-conforming lot in every direction?
I'm not a planner, but if that's the case, then that's the case, yes.
And are you also aware of the fact that according to Howl Ordinance, any gas station, another gas station has to be 2,500--
That's not his expertise.
Sorry. Okay. Okay, with that being said, regarding the traffic patterns in a turn from, off the gas station on Wyckoff Mills Road, are you aware that this road is so heavily traveled that at the corner of Strickland Road and Wyckoff Mills Road, it is two lanes, one this way and one that way? And are you aware that it will be next to impossible for a gasoline tanker truck to maneuver to make a left turn on Wyckoff and Strickland because--
Mr. Ray, could you comment on that, please?
Yeah, I can. I've sat at the intersection during peak hours, morning and afternoon, watched the traffic flow, and it's my opinion that even during those peak hours, there will be a time when the gasoline truck, if it has to make that left turn, can do so. One of the things at that intersection that makes it work pretty good, in the afternoon, there are a lot of people, commuters, I presume, that are heading south on Wyckoff Road, that turn right and then make a left on Route 9 South. These are people probably coming down Halls Mills, Halls Mills Road and Kozloski Road, they're trying to avoid Route 9. I used to do it all the time when I lived here in Howell, and there's a good 40 seconds of green time that is afforded to the Strickland Road cycle during peak hours. So even when that traffic at that intersection backs up through the intersection itself, the minute the traffic light turns green on Route 9, that traffic starts to clear. And I watched during the afternoon peak hour when traffic was at its heaviest, and it cleared on every cycle. The traffic cleared, got back to Route 9 South on every cycle, primarily because the state has given it a good 40 seconds of green time to that movement.
Mr. Ray, I just need to interrupt you for one moment so that the record can reflect that the deputy mayor has joined us.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So the traffic clear every cycle, whatever traffic is queued up through the intersection, it clears out?
Okay. Well, may I give out this, I think I gave it out already once before--
What is this?
This is--
Because we do have several exhibits that you have previously entered.
This is the traffic going down Wyckoff--
Well, what, Mrs. Dixell, can you bring it to me for one moment so I can see?
Yeah, sure, sure. I think I gave it, but I want them to see it.
Well, I just want to see if we've marked it in already.
We might have.
Yeah.
It might.
Peter, can I ask you--
Okay, this has previously been marked as P9.
If we could just hold on for a second. Peter, Ms. Dixell keeps representing a non-conforming and an undersized lot. Now, we understand that the lot is undersized. However, this is a permitted use, is that correct?
That's correct.
So it's not non-conforming?
Well, that's not, Mr. Chair, it's not really the way to look at the non-conforming. So, first of all, we as a board have no jurisdiction to determine nonconformity. That rests exclusively with the zoning board under Section 68. We can only acknowledge the fact that it's undersized. The size of the lot would be non-conforming if it were permitted at the time that it was created, and then there was a subsequent zone change that made the minimum lot size larger. We have no idea, for all we know, there was just a variance that was granted at some point in time that allowed a smaller lot size. So there's the lot size issue of nonconformity, and then there's the use issue of nonconformity. It's a permitted use, so the nonconformity is not applicable to use.
Not with use.
But it could be applicable to lot size, but it's not an issue for us to determine. I mean, we have a lot, it has a lot size, and that's basically what we're dealing with.
I just wanted to be clear about that.
Are you aware that the required square footage is 80,000 square feet, and your gas station doesn't meet that?
That's not a traffic issue, I don't believe.
Well, okay. That's what I meant by undersized.
So she's moving on.
Okay. Is it possible that I can give the applicant a copy?
They have it, you've already introduced it.
He's going to look on with you.
You can have, yeah, you can have this. Okay. And are you aware that the Gill gas station must be on a corner? Must be a corner, we're at intersection and Main Road, Gill, corner. Gill is further down from Woolies, it's not on the corner, according to, according to the rules, Gill must be on a corner of Route 9 and the intersection. They're not, they're further down. The Exxon is on the corner, but they're not. Also, okay, are you aware that I have a letter from Mr. Richard Doobie, Executive Manager, Major Access Permits, DOT, said to me to, that he's not happy with your in on 9, out on Wyckoff, and the convenience store, all on the same lot?
Do you have a letter from Mr. Doobie indicating he's not happy with it?
Yeah, he's retired, but it's--
I know he's retired.
I know that.
And he's very happy.
I know that, but it was sent to me--
Well, we haven't filed an application--
2015.
Well, just a couple of procedural things. One, Mr. Alfieri, you can ask questions of Mrs. Dixell. This is what Mrs. Dixell has, that's the totality of what she has, so, you know, whatever your answers are, that's based upon this.
So the question was, are you aware that Doobie issued a letter in 2015?
I haven't seen that letter, but I do know one thing, the NJDOT has to approve our curb cuts on both roads because they're both under the DOT's jurisdiction, and if the new person that's in charge of permits is unhappy with our plan, we won't get approved.
And they'll direct you to the modifications.
Right, to get an approval.
Is it all right if I give this out? Why not? Do I have to save it for testimony?
This is what we looked at before?
No, you have not seen this.
All right, well, I can't answer because I don't know what it is. If it's something that you have a quest, if it's something that forms the basis of a question for Mr. Ray, then yes, we'll mark it in. If it is not something relevant to a question for Mr. Ray, then we'll save it for when you testify.
Save it when I testify, because I really need to read this entire letter because Doobie is not happy.
All right, no, that's fine, we can save it for when you testify.
He's not happy with the whole thing.
Well, Mr. Ray's answered the question. He's unaware of any unhappiness or dissatisfaction on Mr. Doobie's part.
So, then I'll have to save it for--
You can save it, yeah, yeah.
When I testify, that'll have to wait.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, listen to this. Okay, and-- And, okay, now let me ask you something. Are you aware that the Villages Senior Development, 671 homes and 1,000 people, is less than 45 feet across Wyckoff? My husband and I pulled a tape, it's not 60, it's--
I don't know what the distance is, but you're close.
45.
Might be nice to have a place you could walk to to pick something up.
Well, you know what?
The question was just whether you were aware of the location.
I am.
The answer is yes.
Okay, are you also aware that seniors would like to live in peace and with dignity?
It's not his, it's not his field of expertise, traffic engineering.
Well, is--
That may be a planning question, Mrs. Dixell, the quality of life--
Quality of life type stuff.
Yeah.
Is there any way, what are the hours that are going to be for your delivery?
It's not his.
For your truck going in and out, what are the hours going to be?
The station, I think, is asking to be open 24/7, but I don't think we've decided when deliver, I mean, there probably could be some restrictions placed on the hours that deliveries can be made.
Okay, well, all right, would it be possible to not do any major truck and fuel deliveries past 7, 8 o'clock at night, or before 7:00 in the morning? Seniors have a, you know--
We could certainly ask the applicant that question and respond at the next hearing.
I mean, we're all getting on--
Okay, Mrs. Dixell, Mr. Alfieri has said that he will ask his client, and at next meeting, he will let you know the client's answer to that.
Okay. All right, well, like I say, I have a lot to testify about, so I guess I have to hold it until I have to testify, because that's going to be a lot of stuff. But, yeah, just asking you to give, talk to everybody in your, I'm asking you to talk to everybody that's connected with this project, and ask them to rethink some stuff and give consideration to 1,000 senior citizens, and the houses especially, that are directly on that line. They're not, the houses, the road is exactly 45 feet, Jerry and I pulled a tape, across from the driveway. So the houses on the Villages side, maybe another 10 feet in, and they're directly there. So give the people consideration. That's what I'm asking, that's--
Mrs. Dixell, we done?
Yes, I'm sorry, I have to leave because I have a lot of stuff to read. And I do, when will I be able to give out the original contamination stuff from 2009?
They have not--
The original application.
Mrs. Dixell, they have not presented their testimony yet from their LSRP. So when their LSRP testifies, to the extent any of those documents form the basis of a question to the LSRP, you can introduce them. To the extent they do not, when you testify on your own behalf, you can submit whatever you'd like.
Okay, and Mr. Cachero, the board did ask me once, another previous hearing, do I still have the contamination report from, on the Act of Contamination, listen, I printed it for them, and I, you know, I did, I did it.
Well, we'll do that in conjunction with their environmental testimony--
Because your board asked me for it.
Well, that's fine, but that, the relevant part of the hearing to do that will be when the environmental expert testifies.
Okay, because I did it in January of 2019.
Okay, all right.
At 7:33 p.m. All right, I'm sorry, but I wish I could do more.
Well, you're going to do all of it, it's just there are specific times to do it. So you're not, I just want to be clear, you're not being prevented from doing anything, it's just it has to be done at the time the law requires.
Trying to get in as many questions as, let me see, okay, and this is traffic, so it has nothing to do with contaminated tanks that are still there.
That's correct, that'll be their LSRP.
Okay. All right, no, thank you. Thank you.
Would anyone else in the audience like, please step forward, put your name on the record? Name and address.
John Woolley, Woolley's Fish Market. I basically have one question. You've done a lot of traffic study here. Has anything been looked at out on the Route 9 North shoulder with regards to some sort of a deceleration lane, or something that can allow traffic to get off the main two lanes? Apparently, this building is proposed to shut off most of my visibility, and your landscape is going to cover the digital sign that I was approved for, so I'm wondering how we could accommodate people looking for my building now.
Well, right now, the shoulder is used for deceleration, and it will be into your property and this property itself. As for a deceleration lane, I think the Wyckoff Road drug handle, if you will, is really the deceleration lane for traffic that wants to get to the intersection and cross over, or even if they want to continue north on Wyckoff. So I don't see the DOT doing much more than what they've already done on this section of Route 9 to address that. Typically, you have a full-width shoulder out there, and that's used for deceleration.
Mr. Alfieri? I mean, obviously, as you know, the application is not concluding tonight, there are some things you're discussing with the applicant. Is sort of a sit-down with Mr. Woolley to see whether there's some kind of design that addresses his concern, is that something maybe that could be done between now and the next meeting?
We would love to sit down with Mr. Woolley, I'm not sure how we can, but we would, if there's a way we could work it out, we would be glad to do it. We know how to reach each other.
Okay. There was some conversation about a truck driver not needing fuel but stopping to get something to eat. We've seen trucks park on the shoulder of the road to come in and shop in my location as well as in the gas station. That could cause a real problem, so that should be looked at.
So, Mr. Woolley, let me just ask a question. Chief?
Yes.
If you have a truck parked on that shoulder, is that a ticketable offense?
Parked on a shoulder? Yes.
Okay. So, what the chief is representing, Mr. Woolley, is if that truck is parked either for the applicant's or for your business, and the officer sees that, that's a ticketable offense.
Good, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one more thing?
Well, we have, why don't we let the rest of the public finish, Mrs. Dixell?
I'm sorry.
If there's anybody else.
Give it back to you.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to step up and ask questions of the traffic engineer? All right, Mrs. Dixell, one more traffic question, please.
Yes, well, Mr. Chairman and applicant, there are many nights, or many days, when we come home or late in the afternoon, and there's a, at least a 53-foot trailer truck parked along your gas station. Maybe the guys in the Villages, maybe that, but the truck is there all night. How are you going to present, prevent anybody from doing that? Because that truck, there are trucks there numerous times.
So--
Trailer trucks that park right on the driveway exit from this gas station, all night.
As I just explained to Mr. Woolley, the chief has indicated that that's a ticketable offense. So I would say the appropriate action, if you saw that, is to simply call the police department and say, there's a truck parked on the shoulder of Route 9, could you please have an officer check that out and ticket it if appropriate?
Yeah, all right, when we're out at night and we see it, we do, but, you know, there are times when it just, we're not out, and it may park there and then block your station-- are times when it just -- we're not out, and it may park there and then block your station and access and whatever.
Well, I think maybe they're parking right now because the station is vacant.
Right, that's exactly right.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to ask questions? Seeing none, I will close public portion of that.
Now, and that concludes tonight's presentation. My son gave me a new phone today, I have no idea how to get it.
Mr. Alfieri, just before we carry the matter, just for housekeeping purposes, there is an objector represented by counsel. You did have a telephone conversation with Mr. Gazarovski, who represents the objector. Mr. Gazarovski was aware of the hearing tonight, but they made their own determination, as was represented to you, not to come and participate.
That's right. I spoke to Mr. Gazarovski, he had no comments as it relates to traffic, and we told him that only traffic testimony would be provided. I did advise him that we would tell him of the new hearing date whenever it's established, and he would then bring his experts if -- he's concerned with planning, so it's really the planning that he's going to be here for.
Okay.
And I did get some dates from Eileen in December, there were two meetings in December, and it looks like our experts, the LSRP and the planner, were available for the second meeting.
December 19.
December 19.
Good, best I wasn't going to be here.
So, if we can carry it to that night, without further notice to the public, we will come back on the 19th. And, Mr. Chair, if for some reason the LSRP can't come here, we'll get you the answer as early as possible so that you're not advised at the last minute that the 19th for some reason doesn't work any longer.
We have to exercise our subpoena power.
Mr. Chairman, if it comes to pass that an LSRP was hired by the applicant to come and testify on behalf of the applicant as to what his plans are or whatever, he should be forced to come. If not, get another one.
Ms. Dixell, the LSRP is not hired by the applicant. The LSRP has been retained by the previous owner of the gas station to clean up and to remediate the site. This applicant does not have powers over that LSRP, and that's part of the reason why we're -- and I'm not putting words in Mr. Alfieri's mouth, is that part of the reason is, is that, A, that LSRP is out of state, and the coordination has to go through -- is it BP, Mr. Alfieri?
Yeah, BP, that's correct.
So, Mr. Alfieri has to advise BP, and then BP has to advise their LSRP. It's not this applicant calling up and saying you have to be here.
Thank you.
But to your point, though, Mrs. Dixell, an LSRP is going to be here at some point.
I hope so, if not, then --
You don't have to hope, it's going to happen.
My barber, he's not giving you the testimony he needs to give you.
It's going to happen.
Wait, you will -- there will be an LSRP.
Well, let's hope so.
It just may be that it's a scheduling issue.
Yeah, all right.
Because he hasn't been here twice, so, you know, if you need to talk to a guy and he's not here, what do you do?
Eileen?
We don't make a decision.
What -- so, we have one meeting in --
The application is delayed.
November, which is going to be the second round -- if we don't finish Monmouth Corporate Center on October 10th, we're going to carry it to the September 7th meeting?
November 7.
I'm sorry, November 7. What do we have on for the first meeting in December?
Right now, nothing.
And this would be the only thing on the second --
The second meeting, so far. There's other applications in there that if they have to go somewhere.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Alfieri, I also need an extension of time, please.
An extension through the end of the year?
Thank you.
Okay, so then, case number SP 1006 of Gill Petroleum Incorporated, be carried to the board's December 19, 2019 meeting, beginning 7:00 here in the main meeting room at Town Hall. There be no further notice to property owners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Yeah, Mr. Cuciar, it was brought up that if for some reason the LSRP cannot show up, the extension is only through the end of the year?
We'll deal that at the time of the hearing. So, basically, here's what would happen, the applicant would either --
The applicant would either grant us an extension to bring the LSRP in, or the applicant would compel us to make a decision that night without extraordinarily relevant and important information.
Mr. Alfieri's always been fine giving the extensions, though.
We understand, we can't get an approval.
So, we bring an LSRP here, so if for some reason -- I don't know if I heard the whole question, but if for some reason we're not prepared to come on the 19th, we'll contact Eileen early enough, and we'll give an extension beyond the end of the year so we get to the next meeting.
Okay.
We're not going to -- we can't pull one over on you guys, I understand that.
Okay.
All right.
Was that the question, by the way?
That was the question, yes.
Well, can I subpoena this guy to show up finally? It'll be the third meeting.
Mrs. Dixell, Mrs. Dixell.
Why would we?
It's not the public portion right now.
We're going to be here next week, all right? You, Peter, and I have to get together about the master plan.
Yes.
All right, so, we're going to show this discussion right now, okay? All right, anything on the master plan? Committee report, as I was just talking about?
Yeah, we just -- we met, and we started to review the reexamination report, and it's in the works.
Okay.
I'd also like to take a moment to give some kudos, if you don't mind, to the Community Garden. Once again, I got an update from the Community Garden. They have donated over 1,700 pounds of produce to those in need, to the senior center and to the food pantry this year. And they expect to produce even more food before the season is over, so I thought that was a good thing for the public.
Very nice, very nice. That's it? Any reason for an executive session?
Excuse me? No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Just a reminder, we do have a special meeting next Thursday, 7:00.
Yep, next Thursday, the 10th, 7:00 PM. It's going to be all night on Monmouth Corporate Center.
I'll send the agenda links out tomorrow.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Schneider, second, Mr. Chief Kondrick, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting's adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.